All right, chatty Charles. I would like to call this regular meeting of the Coralville City Council to order. It is April 8th, 2025. Could I have the roll call, please?
Knutson, Vogel Zhang.
Here.
Huen.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Goodrich.
Here.
All council members except Knutson are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city administrator, the city attorney, and several other staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Moved by Huen. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Okay, on to our first proclamation for this evening. This proclamation is for National Library Week. Whereas libraries serve as vibrant community hubs, connecting people with knowledge, technology, and resources while fostering civic engagement, critical thinking, and lifelong learning. And whereas libraries provide free and equitable access to books, digital tools, and innovative programming, ensuring that all individuals, regardless of background, have the support that they need to learn, connect, and thrive. And whereas library partner, libraries partner with schools, businesses, and organizations, connecting the dots to maximize resources, increase efficiency, and expand access to essential services, strengthening the entire community. And whereas libraries spark creativity, fuel imagination, and inspire lifelong learning, offering a space where individuals of all ages can explore new ideas and be drawn to new possibilities. And whereas libraries empower job seekers, entrepreneurs, and lifelong learners by providing access to resources, training, and opportunities that support career growth and economic success. And whereas libraries nurture young minds through story times, educational programs, and literacy initiatives, fostering curiosity and a love of learning that lasts a lifetime. And whereas libraries protect the right to read, think, and explore without censorship, standing as champions of intellectual freedom and free expression. And whereas dedicated librarians and library workers provide welcoming spaces that inspire discovery, collaborations, and creativity for all. And whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers across the country are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week with their communities. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Megan Foster, Mayor of the City of Coralville, proclaim April 6th through 12th, 2025, as National Library Week. And during this week, I encourage all residents to visit the Coralville Public Library, explore its resources, and celebrate the ways that the library draws us together as a community. Signed and sealed on this 8th day of April, 2025, Megan Foster, Mayor. Okay, and we have several folks here from the library board and some library staff members. Would you like to come up to the microphone and say a few words, please?
Thank you, Mayor Foster. I'm Amanda Elkins. I'm one of the members of the Board of Trustees. I gave this speech a couple of years ago, and unfortunately, it's still very relevant. But now, in addition to state attacks on the library, there's federal attacks on the libraries across the country, on our funding, on our librarians and their abilities to do their jobs, the type of materials that we can share, which we will continue to share with our community. So it's as important as ever that we have local support from council and the city and its community, and we continue to appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Hi, Molly Logan. I'm also on the Board of Trustees for the Coralville Public Library, and just wanted to say thank you so much. It's so important for us to have a supportive community, to be a part of the community that is inclusive and welcoming, and wanted to make sure to invite everybody. We have a couple upcoming events at the library that I think are going to be pretty important. Got my phone so I know I get the dates right. On the 11th, so this Friday at noon, there's going to be a dedication of a peace pole at the library that was, it was a bequest of Lloyd Epley, his estate, and it's really, I don't know if anybody's seen the one that was downtown in front of the library at one point. It's similar, it's got some different languages on it, so that'll be dedicated on Friday. And then on the 17th, we have the Friends of the Coralville Public Library. They are holding their annual meeting, so as always, the public is welcome to attend, and we would love to have anybody who's interested in coming.
Awesome, thank you.
I'll bring up the rear. I'm Debbie Hat. I've served on the library board of trustees for, I think, about 20 years. And I've known it as a library for 35 years when we built our house out here. We are lucky in Coralville. Why are we lucky? Because we have the heart of the community in our library. We are free, we are safe for all people, everyone is welcome. We have a staff that is eager to serve and help in any way possible. We thank you for your support over the years, and I think the council's been supportive since the day it opened. I knew many of those women, and I know they would be smiling down on how it has grown and how you continue to support it and all that it stands for. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and we have some staff. Would you like to come up to the microphone and say a few words, or no? Okay, good enough. All right, I'll follow your lead. All right, let's get a photo. Okey doke. Okay. Next item, I have a very special certificate of recognition for the Iowa Heartlanders, the 2024-2025 Iowa Heartlanders team. Whereas the Iowa Heartlanders were founded in 2021 and play professional hockey in the ECHL at the Extreme Arena. And whereas the Heartlanders are currently owned by Mr. Michael Devlin and by, and led by President Matt Getz. And whereas head coach and general manager Derek Damon has been with the Heartlanders since its inaugural season, first as an assistant coach to Jerry Fleming, and the last three years as head coach and general manager of the Heartlanders. And whereas the 2024-25 Heartlanders are captained by Yuki Muria, who has played for the Heartlanders in each year of the franchise's existence. And whereas the 2024-2025 Heartlanders have clinched a berth in the Kelly Cup playoffs for the first time in franchise history. Awesome. And yes, let's cheer for that. And currently, yeah, go for it. Yeah. More cowbell. Okay, all right. And currently reside in third place in the Central Division of the Western Conference of the ECHL. And whereas the 2024-25 Heartlanders have already set a franchise record for wins and points accumulated during the 2024-25 season. And whereas the Heartlanders franchise plays a critical role in the success of the Iowa River Landing District by promoting activity and visitors to the district. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Megan Foster, Mayor of Coralville, do hereby recognize and celebrate the first playoff appearance in franchise history, and would urge all citizens to celebrate the accomplishments of the 2024-25 Heartlanders and support the team throughout the Kelly Cup playoffs and for many seasons to come. Signed on this 8th day of April, 2025, Megan Foster, Mayor. All right, yes. Okay, I believe we have some folks that are here representing the team. Would you like to come and say a few words, please?
Madam Mayor, City Council Members, citizens of Coralville, I'm Michael Devlin, the owner of the Heartlanders, and it is a pleasure to be here tonight, and thank you so much for this recognition. We're very proud and honored to play here in Coralville, to be a part of the community, to support the kids and everybody else here, and we greatly appreciate your support. And you all look wonderful tonight in your gear. So come out to the stadium and have some good fun. Anyone else on the team want to?
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for honoring us on this great day for the Heartlanders organization. We thank you so much for your support, especially the citizens of Coralville. Your support is greatly appreciated, and we love it that you guys are all out at the stadium and get that place rocking for the playoffs. So thank you very much, and I'm a very proud person to be in Coralville. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. This is Yuki Muria, captain for the Iowa Heartlanders. I just want to say thank you very much for your big, big support. And as a guy from the day one, it's great to see how team is getting bigger, better, and community be, getting big, bigger as well. And can't really thank enough for everyone here and people in Coralville City for the big support for the team. And now we are going to the playoff, and we're really excited, and hopefully we can make it to the Kelly Cup. We trying to hoist the cup, so hopefully everyone can support us at the game, but just want to say thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
And before we take our photo, I just want to say that we are very grateful, your wonderful addition to the community. It's been amazing to see the growth of this team over the years, and to see it from the very beginning is amazing. And I do just want to highlight the exceptional work that you do in the community. You volunteer with a lot of different community organizations you have from the start, and I think that that is, is just fantastic. And I love seeing you getting out and really, really being a part of the community. It's been really, really great, so I appreciate that, that service that you do and everything that you do. Okay, let's take a photo, shall we? Yeah, let's all, everybody in their, in their merch bodies.
Got it. Thought you were going to fumble there for a second. You have to squeeze.
I don't know what she did on this one, but it's got a hell of a wide lens. Yeah, that's good. Okay, we do that one. Got it? Couple. Okay, one more.
Seriously, you could turn around and, yeah.
Okay. Wow. Okay, very good.
All right, thank you.
You had yours.
Send me an email.
I mean, you can't be real hockey.
Thank you.
Valid point.
That's kind of like, that's kind of like part of the criteria of the captain.
I think so.
All right.
You pay your dues.
All right. So I just have to say that our meetings are never boring. There's, last week, we had a theater performance. We've had a lot of fun here this evening, and I see that, Jeff, you brought your guitar. Never, and we had cowbells, never a dull moment around here. So that is my segue into our next agenda item. We have Jeff Capps here. Jeff is the Executive Director of the Iowa Children's Museum, and he's going to talk to us about their amazing work and tell us what's going on at the children's museum.
Sounds good. Mayor, thank you so much for having me, council. Great to see you. Thanks to Ellen for lining this up today, and it is, it's been a minute since I've been here to counsel, so my internal clock was going off, so I reached out to Ellen, and she said, well, of course, you're always welcome. And so really glad to be here tonight, and we'll talk more, but right now, we're going to, we're going to sing because this is what we do. It's a beautiful evening in Coralville, a beautiful night for a neighbor. Would you be ours? Would you be ours? It's a neighborly night in this beautiful town, a beautiful night for a neighbor. Would you be ours? Could you be ours? We've always felt lucky to have a neighbor just like you. For 25 years, we've lived in a neighborhood with you, so let's make the most of this beautiful thing. Since we're together, we might as well sing. We're so glad you're ours, we're so glad you're ours, we're so glad you are our neighbor. We are so glad, we are so glad, we're so glad you are our neighbor. The late, great Mr. Rogers. Why Mr. Rogers? Well, because Mr. Rogers liked to play, and he liked to sing, and he liked to do all the things that we like to do. And the simplicity of his message, I think, really sums up why I'm here tonight, and that's just to thank you all for being great neighbors. I'm emotional, but I'm actually not crying. I'm just, I have a runny nose. So, but I really think that timeless message of being a neighbor and being good to each other, community, it's already been represented here tonight in the proclamations, our friends at the library, obviously, and the Heartlanders. And so I couldn't be more honored to, to work here, to work with the organization that I work with, and to work with all of you in various ways. So it's just really, really great to be here. So what have we been up to at the museum? Wow. What have we been up to at the museum? Well, we celebrated 25 years at Coral Ridge Mall in the fall, and many of you were with us for various events commemorating that, and so we are just so thankful to be celebrating that milestone. Not that it's all about the numbers, but a couple of numbers that I will share with you. Served 180,000 people in this past fiscal year. That includes 2,100 member families, 25,000 visitors facing economic challenges that made it, were able to be there free of charge, whether at one of our events, but primarily through museum admissions. And so a lot of really incredible work that we're doing with the support of the community, and I always am faithful in making sure that that part is talked about. The other thing that I would say is happening is we have launched and we're now working a three-year strategic plan that is all about connecting with the community. So tonight, great to be connecting with you all. We just launched a survey, actually, we just closed a survey, got about 500 responses back from the community seeking that input, so that will lead us to some community conversations that we're going to be having, and really launching us into year two, which is all about designing the children's museum of the future. And we don't know what that means yet, in terms of where that takes us, what that means in terms of new exhibits, programs, but we're eager to find out. And so I think, you know, 25 years, big milestone, but we are not sitting still. We're really trying to figure out what's next with this community wants from us and how that aligns with what we think we do really well. And then the third phase of that plan will be building something, and I don't, I think people here are building, they're like, what? You know, we don't know what that means. Does that mean, like I said, expanding our programs? Does that mean expanding our footprint at the mall? Does that mean, who knows? We're trying to figure that part out. And again, we're being very thoughtful about that, I think, and again, doing everything we can to engage the community in that conversation. So stay tuned, because you're going to be hearing more, and I think we're going to be certainly inviting more folks to engage with us on that in particular. So a couple other updates I want to share with you in terms of impact. So how is our shared work continuing to make an impact in the community? Well, there are several things that the City of Coralville does specifically to support us, and I think most of you know this, but just as a recap, one thing that has been a great element of our partnership for many years is our Move It, Dig It, Do It event that is a huge opportunity for us to welcome the community to our space at Coral Ridge Mall. This year, Move It, Dig It, Do It, back in October, we had 6,000, we estimate we had 6,000 people there, free event in the parking lot at the mall, tremendous community outreach, obviously Coralville residents, but a great opportunity to showcase our community for folks from outside of Coralville as well. And again, your support has allowed us to kind of keep making the effort to do events like that, so we're so appreciative. We continue to operate the guest welcome center at Coral Ridge Mall, so thousands of people a year we are greeting and kind of a gateway to Coralville at the mall. We're still very, very proud to do that all these years later. Josh Shamberger got us into that, I think, many, many years ago, and continue to work with Ellen and team on, on making that as impactful as possible in terms of how we represent Coralville there at the mall and welcome people. And then partnerships, just in general, so I'm going to start naming names here, and I probably shouldn't, but Chief, I'm thinking about police, we talked about the relationship here at City Hall, Sherri Parks and Rec, obviously our friends at the Coralville Public Library, CCPA, the Food Pantry, I mean, it just goes on and on. And so I think I've said this at this meeting before, but I have never worked in a community where I feel that kind of support, that kind of connection, and that kind of genuine commitment to doing this community work together. And so I'm just incredibly grateful for all of that, all that support. So speaking of these partnerships, drumroll, we are announcing tonight, actually, it's starting to go out on social media, but we, in partnership with the Coralville Public Library, are launching a first-ever event, timeout. Coralville Public Library and Coralville Parks and Rec and Coralville as a whole, we're launching this first-ever event called Playing in the Park. It's a music festival we actually called a Free Family Event celebrating music, books, and nature. And you all know we now have this permanent installation, the book walk at North Ridge Park, which was a labor of love for the library. It was a, really a collaboration among our organizations. And so that was a long, long time coming. We had this school readiness thing that we were doing for years and years and trying to figure out how to kind of put a capstone on that, and what we ended up with was this amazing book walk with Sherri and team's support at North Ridge Park. So on May 3rd, noon to 3, we're celebrating the completion of the book lock, lock, book walk. Noon to 3, we're going to have three headlining entertainers, Kevin Burt, Blake Shaw, and Swampland Jewels, so we'll have great music, dancing, free play, some pop-up performances from CCPA, Young Footlighters, it, the list goes on and on. And it's just going to be, I keep calling it an unfussy event. It's a lot of work, but the idea is it's very unfussy when you get there. We'll have a couple food trucks, and I think Rotary will be there with grilled cheese and, you know, stuff like that, coffee, coffee truck evidently, so we'll all be, you know, charged up. But it's just going to be a really wonderful community celebration, and we're excited that it happens kind of at the beginning of the festival and event season where we can kind of get, kind of get dibs on that and, and hope people will experience the book walk. Obviously, our mascot, Pete the Turtle, will be taking people around to the book walk. I don't know if you even know this yet, Sarah, but it's going to be amazing. Pete, oh, good, okay.
We're going to go with Pete.
Oh, perfect, perfect. And so we're incredibly excited about this, so I have a whole stack of these flyers that I'll maybe just put on the back table here for you all to take. Perfect. And then maybe extras can go out on the front desk or wherever y'all keep that kind of stuff. But we are really so very excited about that, and so that was one main thing that I wanted to mention tonight. And then again, just thank you all for helping to make that possible, and again, to the partners, just so very grateful. So in closing, again, thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to speak tonight, and thank you for the, for the long history of partnership, the tradition of partnership. We believe deeply that this mission remains essential, that we've been doing for 25-plus years in this community. But I would say, I'd kind of echo what the library board of trustees said, you know, this work only gets harder as we expand our vision, as we think bigger, as we, you know, continue to see other, I'll just say it, competition, right, for, for the work that we do or for the, the resources that we provide. And so it only gets harder, the funding gets harder to raise. We see things like IMLS, Institute of Museum and Library Services, that is having a huge impact in the library world. It's affecting museums as well. And so all to say, it's more important than ever that we, you know, continue to band together and make sure that we are supporting not just institutions like ours, but, but our nonprofits everywhere throughout the community. And so one thing I wanted to share with you, we, I've shared a lot of things with you, but one more thing I want to share with you in closing, we just actually revised our vision statement. So our mission statement for many years has been inspiring every child to imagine, create, imagine, create, discover, and explore through the power of play. And so that remains tried and true, that every child, part of our mission is critical in terms of how we look to do that in various ways, not just in the museum, but out in the community, and I know you all see us out there, so you know we're, we're doing that. But this new vision statement I wanted to share with you tonight, it's about a year old, and it says, "We envision an inclusive collaborative community where children are valued, their right to play is champion, championed, and their future is nurtured." And, you know, so that's a much broader, more expansive vision, and that's something that we're really trying to kind of live into, kind of grow into and live into as we look at kind of what's next for us. So I guess my pledge to you all is that I'll continue to keep you engaged and informed about what we're up to, because I know you all value us as a community asset, and I would just say again, we value, incredibly value, the, the support that you all provide to us and the partnerships that we enjoy here. It's just an absolute privilege and honor to do the work here in Coralville. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I just have to say, I, you know, here, the, the common denominator here this evening is this idea of connection, of community, and one of the things that makes this such a beautiful community to live in is that we all, we all work together to make this a special place, and your, I love your vision statement. I love it so much. And also just want to thank you for all of the memories that I have with my own children, birthday parties, hot afternoons when it's too hot to play outside, cold afternoons when it's too cold to play outside. It's the children's museum is, is where we would, we would always end up, and a lot of, yeah, yeah, a lot of wonderful, wonderful memories there. So we thank you for your very, very important work, and we appreciate you. Excellent. Yes, yes, please do. Please do. That sounds like a really fun event. Awesome. All right. It's going to be hard to top the, the entertainment. Our meetings are very fun, I just have to say that. Okay, on to the next item, community comments. This is a time for community members to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Each speaker will have five minutes, and we do reserve the right to adjust both the individual comment time and the overall comment time based on the number of speakers or any accommodations that a speaker might need. So is there anyone that would like to speak to us this evening? I do not think so. So we will move on to our next agenda item, which is an amendment to the gas and electric franchise agreements. A public hearing is required prior to amending the franchise agreements and increasing the franchise fees on gas and electrical facilities sold by Mid-American Energy and Lynn County REC from 1% to 2%. And the reset public hearings will be held on April 22nd, 2025. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution, resetting public hearings on a proposal to amend the franchise agreements with Mid-American Energy Company and Lynn County Rural Electric Cooperative. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Vogel Zhang, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or comments on this? So we had to reset the public hearing.
Yeah, what, we, the company, each of the companies took a different tact in how they wanted to do this. Lynn County just allowed us to amend the franchise agreement, so we just went ahead and we're amending the one section. Mid-American, since there are three years left on our franchise, wanted to do- are three years left on our franchise, wanted to do totally new franchise agreements. So we did finalize those in the last week. So to make sure we don't have to go through this again, we've reset the hearing. So at the next meeting, I believe, Mid-American will have a representative here to discuss, ask, or see if the council had any questions at the, at the meeting there. So that's why we ended up resetting this for the, to the 22nd.
Okay. Excellent. Does anybody have any other questions or comments? Okay. Could I have the roll call, please?
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Huen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, we have a union contract. This is for our transit employees, and this agreement is for three years, which will run through June 30, 2028. And this will put all three union contracts on the same expiration schedule. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving an agreement with Ask Me Local 183, Council 61, representing transit employees effective July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2028. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Huen, seconded by?
Sarah.
Seconded by Peterson. Any questions or comments on this agenda item or thoughts?
I guess the only thing I would say is just that locals already adopted this or voted on this agreement?
Yes, the local for transit have.
They have, okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Awesome. Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. Roll call, please.
Huen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, we have the Coralville Youth Sports Project Part III. This project includes the construction of two ball fields, dugouts, sidewalk connections, a trail extension to the north and south to the existing trail, and a buildout of roughed-in restrooms at the maintenance building. And the public hearing for this will be on April 22, 2025. Could I have the resolution read, please?
Resolution setting a public hearing in the plan specifications, estimate of cost and forward contract for the Coralville Youth Sports Project Part III. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Peterson, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or comments on this item? All right. Roll call.
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Huen?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, we have the Clear Creek Stream Mitigation Bank. And this is an agreement for developing a post-construction, as-built report for the establishment of in-stream performance standards, standard cross-sections. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving a professional services agreement with EOCEN Environmental Group for the post-construction report for the development of the Clear Creek Stream Mitigation Bank. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Huen. All right. Do you have some information you'd like to share with us? Sherry?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We are nearing the construction end of the Clear Creek Stream Mitigation Bank. And at that time, we need, we'll have some reporting that we need to do to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. So EOCEN, formerly Impact 7G, has been with us through development of this project, through construction. And we would like to have them continue on with us and develop these reports. They would work with the engineers on those as-built drawings, establish all of our cross-sections, and then they would install those permanent markers, which will show where our start and ending points are for our in-stream monitoring cross-sections. So we'll go out, out, year after year, either through a contract with a monitoring agency or with staff. And we would take pictures and be at those points every single year. So it's important that we have those established. And then they would complete that report on construction and on the long-term maintenance fund establishment. Once that goes to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and they sign off on us, we get to sell our next 15% of credits. This would be for $24,500. And I would recommend that we execute this agreement.
Excellent. Thank you for that overview. Does anyone have any questions for Sherry or comments?
Yeah.
Sounds good. All right. Could I have the roll call, please?
Goodrich?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Huen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item is the Iowa Thriving Community Application. This Iowa Economic Development Authority and Iowa Finance Authority program is to further incentivize target housing, targeted housing development in Coralville. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution of support for an application to the Iowa Thriving's Community Program. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Vogelzang, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions on this item or discussion or thoughts? Okay. Roll call.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Huen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. And next item, our board and commission appointments. So I, we had several openings on the Coralville Arts Commission and one on the Board of Adjustment. As you can see here, we have two reappointments on the Arts Commission, one new member of the Arts Commission, and a reappointment for the Board of Adjustment. So I always like to say thank you to the people that fill out these applications. I always love seeing people that are willing to step up and serve. And anytime we have these openings, I would really encourage people to check them out and apply. It's a great way to get involved in the community. So with that, I would entertain a motion to concur with my recommendations for these appointments that will end on December 31 of the year listed.
So moved.
Moved by Peterson. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Huen. Okay. Could I have the roll call? Or just all in favor, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. It's approved. Thank you, everybody. All right. Excellent. Last but not least, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Madam Mayor, I ask Council to consider a motion to approve the calendar, the consent calendar as presented, A to X.
Moved by Huen. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Could I have the roll call, please?
Huen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
The consent calendar is approved, all ayes. All right. City Administrators' Report.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items. First, it was really nice to have the Iowa Department of Economic Development Director, Debbie Durham, here last week. She was giving a speech and then asked that I introduce her to a few business folks from the community. And then we visited a couple sites. And so it's always nice to have her here. And they were, she was very engaged with our business community, and they had some ideas and questions for her, and she was extremely responsive. One of them was looking for some new suppliers for their business that are closer to our area. And they have a program to do that research for companies. And so they were starting that work. And then there was another company that wants to relocate to our area. They live here in our community, and they want to move their business back here as well. And so just fun to have her here and engaged. And just remind people, they have a month, the citizens of the community that, to recycle and reuse. There's lots of activities coming up in May. So just encourage everybody to look around their house. And there's lots of ways that things can be reused. And so encourage them to take advantage of that opportunity.
All right. Thank you for that. Okay, Mayor's Report. I don't really have a whole lot this evening. I do just want to acknowledge a couple of quick things. First and foremost, National Library Week. The library is such an important part of our community. It is the beating heart of our community. So I would really encourage people, I know the library is always busy, but please make sure that you get out and support our library. It is a hard time for libraries and intellectual freedom right now. Libraries are very much under attack. Museums are under attack. So the more we can support these important community institutions, the better. So we have the most amazing library staff, caring people that are there to just offer resources to the community and, and be there for the community. And so we love them and we appreciate them very much. And nice segue, I do want to say thank you to everyone who came to the soup beyond borders at the library. I'll let my colleague talk a little bit more about that, but beautiful event. Again, wonderful partnership between the library and the Food Pantry. So important. And also wanted to say thank you to the Fire Department, wonderful pancake breakfast on Sunday morning. And I feel like this is worth sharing, my 12-year-old son was ranking the different pancake breakfasts around town. And he did tell me that the one at the fire station is the best one. That's, that's number one. The 4th of July one at Northwest is number two, and the West High one was number three. Although he did tell me that the Fire Department was going to slip in the rankings because I talk to too many people when we're there, and we can never leave. And so he said, "I'm not gonna, this isn't going to be my favorite one if you keep talking to people." So noted, noted. But it was a great event, and we'll appreciate everything our Fire Department does for the community as well. And I love seeing all of that support for them. Okay, that's all I have. City Attorneys' Report.
I think I'll take advantage of the shred day for my office. So I hope there's no limit on boxes that I can take out.
Awesome. All right. Committee and Councilmembers' Report. Let's start at this end with Councilmember Vogelzang.
Thank you. I'll extend my personal congratulations to Heartlanders. I hope they keep going strong and bring it, bring it all to the end. It's great. Registration for Parks and Rec, summer programs have started. You can go to corleville.org/parksandrec, and the summer activity guide can be found on that site. Also, to all the upcyclers in the community, this is a great event that's coming up. Upcycle Throwdown is a transformational fundraiser that starts on April 26. It ends with the sale on Saturday, May 3. The proceeds from the sale will benefit Houses into Homes, which is a phenomenal organization, as well as the Park and Rec Scholarship Fund. And information about the Upcycle Throwdown can also be found on our site, corleville.org/upcycletrowdown. The other thing I appreciate is, I'll call it a partnership, I guess, with DeGawen Blood Center. Every, roughly every two months, they have a blood drive right here in City Hall. That's a great event. Blood donation, I think, is, is an extremely important thing for all of us to do if we can, if we're able to do that. The next blood drive here is on Thursday, April 24. One of the things I like about it being here is it's so very convenient. Just pull up and walk in and be done. And that blood drive runs from 11 o'clock until 3 o'clock. And you can make an appointment at ui-degawenbloodcenter.org. So I encourage everybody to do that. And lastly, in the spirit of promoting sports, I want to remind everybody that the Coralville Chaos game was, I had a great time at the first, at the first game. The next game is Saturday, April 19, coming up. So there's, there was plenty of seats available, so I would encourage everybody to attend. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Huen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would, I want to echo on what the mayor said about Fire Department Pancake Breakfast. My kids also love that, and they can't wait until, you know, until the year turn around so they can go and have more pancake. I have to say, this time around, the turnout was great. The room was full, the light kept going, and we have a beautiful day. So there was lots of family and kids just climbing onto the engine and check it out. And it was a, it was a great community event, you know, that support our firefighters, to support the community in turn. So that was, that was wonderful. The community meal, that's also another community event. We partner with the library. And traditionally, in March or April, our meal is called Global Meal. So we try to do things a little different where we highlight the diversity that we have in our community through food, so different cuisine. But we have to follow the Health Department guideline. And so we can't have people cook stuff in their own home and then bring it to the potluck. So what we do is we create space in the kitchen at the church and the pantry for folks to go in there and cook all their meal, their soup. And then we reheat it the day of and then bring it out. So total, we have 12 different soup from, you know, different continent, which is wonderful. And it's feel like everybody was happy with the selection, even the pickiest eater, because there's a lot more choices. And it's just great to see people come together and, you know, converse with each other, enjoying some good nutrition food, and draw a picture on the table, because the library layout brown butcher paper to celebrate National Library Week. And some of the message there are just so heartwarming. It was, it was a great event. And thank you to the Coralville Public Library for their wonderful partnership. We could not have done it without, without them. So, and we served 347 folks. So, the Coralville Public Transit is hiring. So if you look for a part-time job and you want to drive the bus, please apply. They have a sign bonus up to $3,500. And if you don't have your commercial driver license, if you get selected, they train you on the job. So please go on the website and look for that and apply if, if, if you'd like to become a Coralville bus driver. And then summer is around the corner. I know it's only April, but it's going to be here before we know it. And when summer comes, that mean that kid, some kid will not get to eat during the day because school is out. So the Food Pantry is doing, hosting our third summer lunch program this summer. And we are going to extend it to 11 weeks instead of just 10 weeks. So the first year, it was eight weeks. And then last year was 10 weeks, and this year it's going to be 11 weeks. We are going to partner with the school district to provide some lunch for kids 18 and under. But we also partner with local restaurant and agency to diversify our menu and also our activity as well. So we need help. If you own a restaurant, or if you know someone who own a restaurant or, or a business that could support the kid during the summer, have them reach out to shane@corlevillefoodpantry, it's S-H-A-N-E, at corlevillefoodpantry.org. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
I don't have a whole lot. I mean, what a fun night, right? But one thing, and not to be a Debbie downer, but, you know, we have a pretty big staple in our community that's being threatened to leave us, and that's the Coralville American Legion Post 721. They will be having a vote on the 14th of this month whether or not they're going to keep it open or close it down. So if, if you are interested in trying to help keep that open, please get involved. If you're a member, please go vote. And, you know, they need to raise some money to keep it open. It means a lot to me personally. I got married there. I had both of my kids baby showers there, every celebration of life for every family member. Getting a little emotional here, but we've done there. So it has a very, very deep meaning for me. So, but yes, been there, been a part of my life as long as I've been here. So please get involved if you want to see that staple stay in our community. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. And last but not least, Councilmember Goodrich.
Thank you. Included in the celebration that we've been talking about, all the things we mentioned, was also the Fourth Best Basket Auction. Our mayor made a beautiful cake that was auctioned off. And we made, the organism, or group made $12,000, I believe, that will help support the fireworks and so on on the 4th of July. So thank you to all who participated in that. And I just want to thank everyone who supports all these efforts. And I did have a question about the swimming pool, and just wondered if Sherry Proud or Parks and Rec would just give us a... Proud or Parks and Rec would just give us an update on our indoor swimming pool?
Um, we, after we had it re-cocked and filled, we had, it was green, bright green, shamrock green. And so we knew we had most likely a metals problem, and did one chemical that we thought helped. And then immediately when they started adding chlorine, got a reaction again, and turned it green again. They added the, another chemical yesterday. It is blue. It takes 48 hours to coagulate all of those metals together and go into the filter system. And then we backwash and take a look at it after 24 more hours, backwash again. So we're hoping to be back open on Friday.
Thank you.
Probably old pipes corroding. It could have been copper, it could have been iron. We have both. So it's not uncommon, 36 years, that those are starting to break down. So just, just trying to figure it out and, and what can we do to avoid. Jordan Altenhoofen has also worked with us to make sure, like, it coming into, into the pipe from the water, like, there's something, if there's something else we could be doing to avoid this when we fill the Aquatic Center here next month.
Great, thank you. I know you're professionals and appreciate all the work that you do with that. It just kind of reestablishes our belief that we need a new rec center and new pools as soon as we can. So appreciate you keeping it going.
Thank you.
Yeah. I am sorry that I'll miss the next meeting. Our son and his wife gave us plane tickets to visit them in Davis-Monthan Air Force Base in Arizona. So I will be gone over the Easter holiday. Sorry to miss. Okay.
Awesome. Thank you very much. All right. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Huen, seconded by Vogelzang. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.